I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Ingalls absent. And Bunz?
President?
Stavel?
Aye.
But Ingalls excused.
Yes.
Yes. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Now, all in favor, say aye.
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 Four zero. Are opposed. Consent agenda, anything to remove before I ask for a motion to approve? They have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Discussion.
Computers, two of them, for aces. I don't know what the going rate for computers is. I buy them for three hundred bucks.
These are labs. The laptops with...
One is a laptop and one is a desktop.
Okay. So is it these a price?
Yes.
Yeah, for the amount of core we threw into them.
Okay.
I buy them for cheaper too, but mine does not work nearly as fast as our computer does.
I know, mine too.
Do I get a motion in second?
Yes.
And for discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Four zero. Welcome to the audience.
Welcome, everyone.
Home rule proclamation. Whereas home rule is essential to effective and responsive municipal governance in Iowa and provides flexibility to make decisions at the local level, where decisions are made closest to the people they impact and can be tailored to fit local conditions, needs, and concerns in order to better serve taxpayers. Whereas the city of Hudson supports home rule and the powers it provides to make local decisions that best reflect the residents of our community. Whereas the citizens of Iowa approved the adoption of home rule in the constitution of Iowa on November 5, 1968. Whereas this is the 50th year of municipal home rule in Iowa. Whereas home rule continues to be vital to the health and prosperity of all cities in Iowa. Now therefore, I, George Wessel, Mayor of Hudson, Iowa, do hereby recognize the 50th anniversary of municipal home rule in Iowa and probably support its continued authority. In the proclamation. Obviously, no citizens' requests or presentations, no committee reports or recommendations. Public hearing. I'll open the public hearing regarding the request of Robert Byer to rezone approximately 7.26 acres at 3904 South Hudson Road from A1 Suburban Agricultural District to R6 Single Family Residential District. Chrissy, any written comments?
No.
And obviously, no oral comments. We'll close the public hearing. Public hearing number two. Public hearing regarding the request of Patricia Gordon, Leanne Cox, and Ronald Henry to rezone approximately 1.94 acres at 4039 Ranchero Road from R5 Large Lot Residential District to R6 Single Family Residential District and from R5 Large Lot Residential to A1 Suburban Agricultural District. Chrissy, any written?
No.
And obviously, no oral, so I will close that public hearing. Number three. Public hearing regarding the amending of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudson, Iowa, adding Chapter 69.15, no parking on one side relative to Springfield Partridge. Chrissy, any written comments?
No.
No oral, so we will close that public hearing. Fourth one. Public hearing regarding authorizing the use and acquisition of property by eminent domain in the name and by the authority of the City of Hudson, Iowa. This is Byron Sargent Park. Chrissy, any written?
No.
And no oral, so we will close that public hearing. Okay. General government. Hudson City Council maintains the right to read the first and second readings of the ordinances presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. Item A, discussion action to approve the second reading of ordinance 798 and ordinance amending Section 16602 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Hudson, Iowa as amended by moving certain real estate from the R1 Single Family Residential District and including the same in the R2 Low Density Residential District. And this is the Clausen Development on the west side of... So moved. Second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Reister?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Stavel?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Four zero. Item B, discussion action to approve the second reading of ordinance 799 and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudson, Iowa, Chapter 76 Bicycle Regulations. And on this one, I would either accept a motion to pass the second reading or I would accept a motion to waive the second reading.
I would make the motion, we waive the second reading and move to the third.
Do I hear a second?
No, second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Stavel?
Aye.
Reister?
No.
Three one.
Bunz?
Oh.
Aye.
Sorry, I was going down the path. Okay. Back to item B, then discussion action to approve the third reading of ordinance 799 and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudson, Iowa, as Chapter 76 Bicycle Regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
All right, Wyatt?
Aye.
Stavel?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Reister?
Item C. Discussion action to approve the first reading of ordinance 800 and ordinance amending Section 16602 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Hudson, Iowa as amended by removing certain real estate from the A1 Egg Suburban Agricultural District and including the same in the R6 Single Family Residential District. And this is the Byer property.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Bunz?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Stavel?
Aye.
Item D. Discussion action to approve the first reading of ordinance 801 ordinance amending Section 166-02 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Hudson, Iowa as amended by removing certain real estate from the R5 Large Lot Residential District to R6 Single Family Residential District and R5 Large Lot Residential District to A1 Suburban Agricultural District. And this is the Gordon-Cox-Henry splits. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Stavel?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Item E. Discussion action to approve the first reading of ordinance 802 and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudson, Iowa by adding Chapter 69.15, no parking on one side. And this is specifically Springfield, which is across in front of the apartment complex, and Partridge, which goes around Upper Ridge Phase 2. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Reister?
Aye.
Stavel?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Item F. Discussion action to approve Resolution 2393, a resolution to authorize the use and acquisition of property by eminent domain in the name and by the authority of the City of Hudson, Iowa. And this is relative to the Byron Sargent Park.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Right now, I think I'm a no vote. Lobby me. I mean, I generally hate eminent domain. And one of my concerns is that even if this is a really well justified thing, six months or five years down the road, we might go, well, you know, we did do eminent domain in that one case and so we have a precedent for doing it. And now that's used to justify doing it in another case that might not be quite as obvious. So, in this case, I would not be in favor of eminent domain if it was for property to develop. Okay? I would not be in favor of eminent domain if it was a case of an existing business saying, hey, I really need the land beside me and they won't sell. Therefore, I want the city to do eminent domain because you can increase your tax base. In this situation, we have about a two and a half acre parcel property that's been a park since at least 1970... 1969, when I first lived in Hudson. It's always been a park out there. It was well maintained by the city for a while. Then it was turned over to Blackhawk County Recreation or Forestry as a park. Years ago, there was an issue. You used to have a restroom, outhouses out there. And it became an issue of...
There were bad things.
Bad things happening within that. So that was taken off. The Blackhawk County Conservation Board decided a few years ago, no, we don't want anything more to do with it either. Since that point in time, it has been a property that had been created as a treed area at the request of the donors who gave it away. We've been working on this periodically for the last 15 years at least, trying to contact the owners and be able to get ownership of it. And we've been running to a dead end with some of the...
It's a trust. It's a family trust. So the whole thing is, it was never technically donated correctly because it's in the family trust name. But since 50 years ago, the family has now split. Some of them are in Ohio, some of them are in Washington. We don't even know who half of them are. And we can't get a hold of most of the family trust members that are listed, nor do we know if they're alive or dead. So the problem is, we try to contact them and we have over the last at least six years that I've been around, and we get no responses back. So there is a family member now that wants, that's requesting that the family member that is listed on this really wants it to stay a park. Wants it to stay... They don't want any money from it, they just want Hudson to have it. They want it to make sure that it stays as a park. Well, the only way we can really do this, because he can't just sign off because he's not the whole family trust, is to eminent domain it, just take it over.
So it doesn't...
And then we can, then it comes back to us.
It doesn't belong to Blackhawk County?
No.
No, not anymore.
Did they intend it to belong to us and then we gave it to Blackhawk County?
No. Blackhawk County wanted, was gonna take it over and try to do the same thing, try to get a hold of the family members so that they could put it in part of the Blackhawk County Conservation and keep it a park. They weren't able, they weren't successful either. So that's when they just quit and said, forget it, we don't want it either.
For liability reasons, if they were doing something on it, well...
Right. They don't own it.
That's why we don't mow it, it's the city, because we don't own it. So our liability insurance is no good. So...
Right.
Somebody, we don't know who periodically mows it out of the goodness of their heart.
But we do know that.
And I think it would be a great spot. Eventually, the expectation would be is that right adjoining to its west, which would be between the car wash and the park, eventually, that was probably, most of that area is gonna be a stormwater retention pond as that continues to develop. The intention of Bill Clausen is to deed that property eventually to the city. And it would be enough that we could have bike trail around it, walking, whatever. This park would be adjoining it, which would be a great park because we don't have a lot of parks in town and don't have one that would be...
On that side of the road.
On that side, between the Highway 63 and Eldora. So have all the people in the trust somehow been certified male?
No.
No, that's what we're asking for is...
We can't even track all of them down right now.
So that's what we're working on. And over the last 15 years that we've tried it, we've never been successful in getting all of them.
So when you say that's what we're working on, you mean like... What we're asking for here is approval to pursue eminent domain to attempt to acquire the property through all the legal ramifications that we have to have.
I haven't gotten the entire code section right now. I don't know if published notice is ultimately gonna be okay for the addresses that we don't know. I can't give you that guarantee right now. I hope that's what it's gonna say if you guys authorize to go ahead and proceed with this. But there are a lot of procedural hoops and notice requirements for all of it.
If this all happens, and then if somebody comes back and says, somebody who has some say so in the trust, says, no, 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 we wanna keep this...
They could probably stop it at some point.
Yeah, then they can stop it. And we can stop it. Yeah, okay. What we're willing to do here is pass the ordinance that says we're gonna do it and by fact then authorize Heather to go ahead and start the process from a legal perspective. We told her to start the process because we went through it at the task force and says, this is the right thing to be doing. So let's start it. And then at each step along the way, if Heather says, hold, this ain't gonna work...
But this was initiated really by a member of the trust.
Yes.
Richard Bestine.
Not one member.
Not us.
Not by us.
Yeah, by us.
Correct.
He hired an attorney locally who came to us saying, this is what my client wants.
And I made him have his attorney come to a meeting.
Yes.
I mean, at first, he approached me about it and I said, I'm not... They haven't authorized me to expend any legal funds solving this problem. You wanna talk to them about some options, you can go ahead and do that. And he made an appearance at the mayor's task force and asked for it.
The attorney for the member of the trust who had an attorney?
Yes.
And he's...
And by the way, that guy also called my office. He was very persistent. I mean, this gentleman is very persistent about converting it to a park.
I think he's, from what I understood, he is elderly and possibly not in good health and wants to make sure it's done before he goes.
Doesn't even live here.
Lives in Washington State.
Right.
And he even went to the point of putting in an editorial in Waterloo Courier saying, please, City of Hudson, do this. Oh, wow.
Yeah, so it's not an eminent domain, we wanna steal it.
Convinced now?
Not that a four one vote would have passed.
No. No, it's important for you to know all that background.
And I like it being on record from the standpoint of anybody pulling up... Yeah, exactly. It saves Chrissy time explaining to them what we're doing. Just go to video.
And, you know, Mr. Sargent was one of the founding fathers of Hudson.
Yeah, great.
And family still lives here too.
Great. So am I to the point of asking for a roll call, Chrissy?
Yes, you are.
Roll call, please.
All right, Bunz?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Stavel?
We are now.
Yeah.
Right now.
Aye. Who had the motion?
I mean, Gail and me.
That was all discussion. Yeah, we had the motion in the second for the discussion.
Sorry.
And I appreciate the question because I really wanted to, yeah, just to have that discussion. I think I'm in G, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
So sometimes I jump ahead signing stuff.
We know.
Yeah. Item G, discussion action to approve Resolution 2394, resolution for approval of the seal coding bid for the 2018 season. That'd be to Prairie Road Builders for $44,000, which basically Public Works confirmed doing, subject to reviewing the bids and stuff. And Danny and I and Chrissy went over those to make sure we were on the right one.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Stavel?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Four zero. Item H. Discussion action to approve Resolution 2395, a resolution setting wages for city employees of the City of Hudson, Iowa for fiscal year 2018-2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
I went through your attachment, which was helpful. And what I didn't have time to crunch all the numbers to see, like, you had the wages listed for sometime 2015.
That was just showing you some historical going up of where we are now.
Yep.
Eventually, it was, and these increases are based upon where they're at today.
Yep. And so what I was trying to do, and I kind of in my mind came up with what percentage increases we've done since 2015, and then comparing it to just kind of the private sector. One of my, and this isn't personal to any of our city staff that do good work, but government is notorious for increasing wages for taxpayer employees more than what is happening in the private sector. Did you take a look at that and what's your analysis of that? I guess my analysis comes down to, in most cases in the private sector, we're doing that. You've got a continual, you've got normally a much larger base of employees than what we have here. So what you have is you've got an allowable, say a 2.75. And a lot of that allowable is taken care of in a lot of situations by the fact that you have your higher wage earners retiring or leaving and you've got your entry levels coming in. Or if you looked at it as far as an overall average, it has some latitude of change within there, even if it's a case of somebody going middle of the year and we started in with a young one. Now, in the case here, what we have is we've got the absolute same base of limited numbers of people. Essentially, very little, if any, turnover on it. So that still has to be comfortable with what we're doing from an increase over a three point. We put a 3.50 in the budget. And that's basically what I'm staying within that. Now, you never know from year to year whether I'm absolutely accurate on my estimates as far as overtime. So that's one thing that can occur. Within this, we also, because from our researching other towns, communities, as well as our actual, what's happened with our police force over the last year and a half, departures have gone because of the wages. The union to come in and ask for an eight and eight and an eight percent increase in the union contract, which we just renewed. My counter proposal, which we approved, which approved by the council, was a 10% first year and then a three and a three. So a total of 16 compared to their asking of 24. That's part of the reason that our wages come in close to this 3.5 that we approved in the budget is that compression within the police.
And that, we don't have any control over at this point now because we've already ratified their union contracts.
The other things, of course, is Bob Stevenson in his zoning administration was 30 hours a week and at $19,000 because he did not want any earnings above the Social Security. We attempted to replace that position, we could not find a reasonable. So part of that is not only taking his 16 or 19,000, but also what in my opinion is a little bit more than that and just putting budget to probably have to have a full time. So that's where some of these other movements have ours, Chrissy's, for example. Chief Marsh's is because more from the compression issue of raising his officers up 10%. I felt I needed to move him a little bit.
I don't think there's any of them, to me personally, that were completely out of reach of where, you know, a normal, you know, I guess, coming from the private sector as well, you know, I would say average between 2%, 3%, 4%, no higher than, you know, the 5%, I think is pretty...
And we're kind of a tough situation here too. We've been fortunate that we haven't lost good staff to Waterloo or Cedar Falls whose wage scales are much above ours.
Much different work experience as well.
Yeah, true. So, you know, the plus is the...
I was just saying, I hate to, and I'm with you, Matt, because I know last year we talked about this too, that just because another town, I don't think we need to be the top. I don't think we need to be the bottom. I don't think that comparisons towns... Now, do I think we need to be, obviously, any job needs to be comparable in wages so that we don't continuously lose people. But I don't think we need to be anywhere at the top. I don't think we need to be at the bottom for an average. And I think there is a lot of, and George, I appreciate the fact that I think you've done a lot more in these last two years with reasons for, you know, or justification as far as performance as well.
Right.
And not just because it's the next year. And I know you've met with the individual department heads to go through their performance things as well. So I definitely, I appreciate that as a council member, you taking that on too. And the personnel committee of working with that too, so...
I think one other thing is, you know, is there ability to give a half percent less raises or 1% less raises? Yeah, there is. But I don't wanna lose any of this good qualified staff. When I see in the next five years, if all of our development goes the way we currently have it rolling, the population of this town can be 20% higher. It's very possible to go from 2,400 people to close to 3,000. And I think we need to make sure that this is the base of the employees. Now, as time goes on and we need more staff, it's gonna be at the entry levels underneath this good solid base. Yep. Couple more questions. Sure. Overtime hours. Is there, I mean, and you've looked at this way more than I have and understand it. But in terms of cost benefit, I mean, there's quite a bit of overtime hours allotted for in there. At what point does it make sense for us to not pay overtime in bringing someone in part time or... I think, well, two, couple situations, primary, three situations. One is the police force. Some of that is overtime because we didn't have part timers on staff. And they overlap a little bit and it's awful struggle to take 168 hours and absolutely match it off with 168. So some of that comes in as overtime. From the standpoint of Chrissy's situation, the overtime, we've been taking on a lot here. I think that overtime is gonna reduce over the next year, especially as we get Chrissy off to more of the classes that she's taken, as well as getting Katie more into those. So as Katie's able to take up a little bit more, then I think Chrissy's gonna be able to start sliding that over. Whether it eliminates hours, I don't know. But it may be that some of Katie's hours will be more overtime as opposed to the overtime rate of Chrissy's.
And if there needs to be a part time person underneath that, it could do some of the payments and things rather than that.
Relative to Rick, Rick is the other very high level, but we've got his reduced to a reasonable amount. What we're working on is getting Jake fully certified and taking more time of having him do some of these certifications. As that occurs, Rick's hours are gonna still be up as he gets that training done. But a year from now, we should be in a situation of being able to pull back on that one as well.
And it's hard to predict when a water main break occurs, you know? And how many times it snows and...
Well, and they do have some planning that they have to do too because they have to do the well testing so many times a week.
Right.
That has to go in sometimes.
Even on the weekends.
You know, to make sure that our waters are safe. But, and the other thing being is that Rick is getting closer and closer every year to retirement eventually, unless he's gonna work till he's 100, and I haven't heard yet, but...
I don't believe he's...
I don't think he's planning on it, you know? So as he trains Jake, and Jake's gonna start to take over some more of that with, yes, in the very near future. I hope in the near future that administration and everybody else looks at that too.
And we're also visiting, we're working with Steve Penberthy also on, okay, do you really wanna become certified in some of this stuff? He hasn't shown a lot of initiative or wanting. He likes being out in the park area, in the street area as opposed to that. But we really gotta, we're gonna find out from him whether he really wants to get more.
And again, with the growth down the line, that, you know, maybe we have to...
I mean that.
Look at also hiring more people and so then we stay out of that overtime range.
Great. Did that go in the packet or not? No. No, okay. I did not include this one in the packet. We put in the wages. If anybody wanted to come in and ask me to go through this, I would go through with it. Otherwise, to me, it's better off.
He's just numbers nerding out over there on it?
Yeah. I liked it. It would throw out a lot of confusion to the 80 people who get it.
You know, and I wanna speak, you know, six, seven years ago when Kate and I first came on, a lot of the budget was balanced on the backs of the wages of our city staff.
Because it was back in 2012 or 13, they were given no raises.
Aye.
Part of that was catch up. Yep, got it. Thank you. Further discussion? Thank you. Roll call?
Bunz?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Stavel?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Four zero. Aye, is that the one I...
Aye.
Discussion action to approve Resolution 2396, a resolution approving the transfer of funds. This one, some of it is from the auditors saying, okay, you've been going through how Ritaligal Auditor Firm was all okay. They, sometimes the state auditors, in some cases had a little bit different. had a little bit different, here's how you really wanna do it, so a lot of this is balancing that type of stuff out, get it the way the Iowa State Auditors want it, and no budget impact, all it is, is transfers between funds and reserves and other type of stuff. So am I to have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
And this is at their recommendation, is that correct?
Yeah, the reserve, the reserve transfers we do every year, the other one is either zeroing out things or moving things so that it makes sense.
Yeah, between normal practice and requests that they-
And it doesn't change the bottom line at all.
Does this relate, we talked about this last meeting, right? And so you were here, and so Chrissy was saying some things were done incorrectly, and then I asked, how was it done incorrectly? And my understanding was, if stuff was going from here to here, it just went directly instead of through the whatever. So you'll see stuff in this one going from here to here and then back into here. Which is what they were. Yeah. And so my question- Easier for them to try. After I thought about that more, after the meeting, I mean, is there, I mean, are we exposed in any way that it was done the wrong way? No, no, not whatsoever. Okay.
No, it'll be a finding on our audit report.
They just haven't, because there's no money that's missing or anything like that.
No, 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 yeah, the bottom line, our cash balance does not change.
Okay, and basically the way it had been done is the way Chrissy was used to it, and the way that our prior city clerks have done it, through our other audits were radical for nine straight years.
We got a different auditor, it's a whole part of it.
Yeah, got it, got it.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
And a four zero. Item J, discussion action to approve Resolution 2397, a resolution setting a date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with Dirtworks Construction LLC, including annual appropriation tax increment payments, and this is just to set the public hearing for June 25th?
You are correct. So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Four zero. Item K, discussion action to approve Resolution 2398, a resolution setting a date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with Plumbing Dynamics LLC, including annual appropriation tax increment payments, again for June 25th.
So moved.
Discussion. Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Stabell?
Four zero. Item L, discussion action to approve Resolution 2399, a resolution for approval payment request number eight, final, regarding the Hudson Rise, Writers Road, and Fast Lane projects, that's the amount of $55,374.44 as budgeted.
Is this the, I'm sorry, so moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, is this like, we write off, this is done, we're signing off, this is complete, done?